Good afternoon, and this wonderful warm day in North Las Vegas. We welcome you to our city council meeting and our redevelopment agency meeting. We'll start the meeting, then we'll go into redevelopment agency meeting for just a couple of minutes. We have another chairman for that, and then we'll go back to our city council meeting. So I just don't want you to get confused, but we have a redevelopment meeting, and it'll take a couple of minutes. There are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning and one at the end of the redevelopment agency meeting, and at the beginning and of the city council meeting. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside where you entered the main entrance and opt to the left on the podium rail on the city clerk's side. We ask that you fill those out, you hand it to one of these wonderful ladies over here, and they will run it up to the mayor pro tem, and he will hand them to me. So, Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yes, Mayor, we are.
Thank you. Tonight, we had the opportunity to have a wonderful invocation given by Pastor Gerald Mason from the Vegas View Church of God in Christ, and following that, there will be the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem, Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Not to ask first, how do we fix this? But what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? To whom do we need to listen? Father, we ask that you would remind them, because we are all subject to forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes from political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the community good of all. We ask that you would remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, everyone is our sibling, that throughout the ages prophets have called leaders of people to respect and protect the least of these among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind and spirit, the strangers, and even the immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margin, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. In conclusion, God, we ask that you would grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know to do what is right and good and true. May they send, and as you and I speak out when it's time to speak out, and listen patiently and respectfully when it's time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of Community, by the Spirit of Justice, and by the Spirit of Love. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Can we say amen?
Amen. Please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Mason. Appreciate your blessing us today. Thank you so much. We have a very, very religious community here. I think there's more churches in North Las Vegas than anywhere else. We had a lot of people here prayed. So, moving on, tonight, we're going to have a presentation of the business in month led by Councilman Black. Are you ready for that, Councilman? Let's go down to the front.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's my privilege to recognize Award III business today, but before I do that, I would like to invite our special guests forward, Jeremy and Judy and Ezra and Skylee if they'll come forward. While they're coming forward, the business that I've selected is Star Nursery, North Las Vegas. Star Nursery has been in the valley for many decades. They have locations throughout the valley, but I'm really proud and would like to brag a little bit this afternoon about the North Las Vegas location. Back in the early 2000s, Mr. Craig Q., the owner, the sole owner and founder of Star Nursery, looked out in North Las Vegas and said, "I see a lot of potential growth out there," located a site right on the corner of Clayton Street and Ann Road near Simmons, 2600 West Ann Road, and he, in 2003, opened his doors. And at that time, Aliante was coming online, a lot of new development in North Las Vegas, so it was the perfect time to create a neighborhood nursery that would enable North Las Vegas to be beautified, one plant at a time, through the sales and service that they offer. A few cool facts about Star Nursery, North Las Vegas, they have 64 employees, they sell about 3,800 Christmas trees a year, 18,000 company-wide. I've perused their Christmas tree forest many times with my daughter to pick out the perfect tree. I like to pick the first one I see, my wife and daughter don't, and so we usually stay for a while and find the perfect tree. I took two plum trees home on my bicycle in my daughter's trailer, little five-gallon ones, they were in my trailer, and they got big and then they died. But anyway, Star Nursery, they also have all the supplies that you need should you choose to reduce non-functional turf and convert to a zero scape or water-tolerant landscaping. I bought my sod from them in 2001. Two months ago, I tore it out myself and put in desert landscaping in my backyard, also with products from Star Nursery. So, I'd like to recognize a certificate of recognition to Star Nursery, Inc., located at 2600 West Ann Road for being an integral part of the North Las Vegas community. Thank you for your loyal service to our residents and adding beauty to North Las Vegas, one plant at a time. Best wishes for continued success, and it's signed Mayor John Lee, Richard Churchill Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem, Isaac Barone Councilman, Pamela Goines Brown Councilwoman, and myself, Scott Black. Before I turn the microphone over, I just wanted to say one really unique thing during this last year during the pandemic, home became kind of a, took on a different meaning for people, and a lot of people had time to, you know, spend at home to do improvements. I spoke to Jeremy and Judy. Star Nursery was a place that people gravitated to. They wanted to plant their own crops in their backyard, to have edible, have tomatoes and fresh vegetables and fruit trees, and do improvements around their house and refresh the landscaping, because home became a place that we spent a lot of time. So they just played a really unique role during the pandemic to support our community as well. So, would you like to say a few things? Jeremy's the general manager of the North Las Vegas location, and Judy is the vice president of operations.
Yes, we're very thankful that we're part of this community. We are very, very committed to the community. We want to be involved, and we want to keep growing. It's very important to us that we keep growing in the community and provide jobs. I mean, that is so important for us. And Jeremy's done an amazing job with the Ann Road location. We're looking in other areas to develop, and it's, 2020 was crazy, but we made it, and we want to continue growing with the community. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to our community. Excuse me. I've worked at the Ann Road store off and on since 2008, so 13 years I've been a part of your community, and I've run this store pretty much the last 10 years. And like Judy said, providing jobs to the community and doing volunteer stuff within the schools in North Las Vegas and working with different churches and different volunteer groups has been quite amazing for me. So I'm glad that I was able to be part of that and part of your community, and I continue to hope that we keep growing with all the growth and all the houses being built, and we can continue to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. And you notice we have Skylee and Ezra. If you guys would hold that, and then you can give it to your dad a little bit later. Skylee wanted to come because she was told that she could meet the mayor. So see that guy right over there? That's Mayor Lee. You can shake his hand in just a minute. So why don't we gather for a photograph?
Take a picture, guys. Take a picture, Ezra. Say cheese.
I'll take a couple. One, two, and three.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
No, thank you, Scott. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Judy.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
This is the mayor. You want to shake his hand? You want to shake, Ezra? Shake the mayor's hand?
Congratulations. And, of course, I bought my pink flamingo.
Oh, yes, yes, of course. Yeah. Thank you so much. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot.
We're going to move on to council items. Councilman Barone?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me find my glasses here, so I... I swear the print is getting smaller and smaller, you know. Well, I had two quick announcements. Number one, Rose Garden Youth Backpack Drive will be July 23rd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Rose Garden Apartments. That's at 12 East Webb, and I'll probably put this on my council newsletter in case anyone is interested, and if anyone's interested in still giving a donation. Mayor, I got to meet, although I haven't had a chance to have a long conversation with one of the newest additions, I think, to the North Las Vegas family here, and she's sitting in the back. Her name is Linda Bridges, and she's our public information officer, and she's going to be assisting with our marketing efforts, and I think that's really great. We've done, Mayor, the staff, your leadership, my colleagues, upper management, everyone, and of course, our residents and business partners here. Everyone's been, everyone's been rolling together and pulling together and making remarkable progress in our city. The only thing is that sometimes I think that that message of all the progress that was made, it doesn't always get out, and I'm very happy that we're going to have Ms. Bridges to help get this information out. And so I just wanted to welcome her to the North Las Vegas family.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Mayor Pro Tem Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight. Had the opportunity to attend a town hall at Sun City, Aliante, and at the same time, went ahead and donated a decent amount of school supplies and donated to, excuse me, seniors with warm hearts, who give it to the schools as well as to the teachers to help them with the cost of education. But part of that donation goes to Project 150 as well. All of those organizations, in particular seniors with warm hearts, do a lot of amazing things for the community. Let me remind everybody once again, if you haven't noticed, how hot it is outside. Couldn't tell by being in here right now, but temperature's been consistently, I would say, above 105 degrees out there. In our new ordinance over here, when it comes to humane treatment of our animals, any day that the temperature goes above 105 or at 105, the owners of those animals are supposed to provide misting systems, shelter, and water. This is something that, you know, we all as human beings kind of take for granted. We do that for ourselves, except for the misting maybe, but too many of these animals are left in the yards and left unattended. And it wasn't too long ago that we lost this little dog by the name of Lily for a very similar reason, being left in the yard chained up and not being able to get any cooling, any water, or any shade. Let me remind everybody, if you were here at the last council meeting, October 16th, which is a Saturday, we are once again going to have our Veterans First Responder Military Appreciation Day at Craig Ranch Regional Park. It starts at 11 o'clock, opening ceremonies. It's open to the public, and that day, all of our veterans, families, military, and first responders and their families are invited to come as well, and all of the food is, all of the food is free to them and their families, and we're going to have some amazing entertainment this year. I think you'd be very, very pleased. Unfortunately, we missed last year because of COVID, but we're definitely going to make up for it again this year. Last but not least, if anybody out here in the audience or anybody listening has some ringing in their ears from this Fourth of July holiday weekend, I'm one of them. This, I think, was one of the worst years that we've experienced. It's unfortunate that some people just don't have any respect for other people in the community, knowing full well that shooting off these fireworks are illegal. We've done PSAs. I did one with Fire Chief Calhoun recently, and Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick did her very best to find a way to ban these fireworks from being sold and brought down here into Clark County. We've so far experienced a loss of life due to these fires, contributed to people setting off fireworks. Not that somebody set off a firework and it landed in their yard, but these are the same people who managed to get these fireworks illegally, were setting them off and set fire to their own property and the property next door to them, which at the same time killed 11 animals, including one woman now, who just died from the burns of being in that fire. So, you know, the property loss, the cost that we incur from having our first responders, our police and our fire, particularly our firefighters go out there, it's extremely dangerous, and with the dry conditions out here, it's very easy to set off a fire. Now, I don't know where you live in Los Las Vegas, or if you live in Los Las Vegas, it doesn't matter, if you live in the valley. We had fireworks going off at 1, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, and they continue, you know, up until last night. So I don't know how to plead to these people just to be respectful to their neighbors, but our city and myself in particular are going to be very vigilant in trying to bring this problem under control in the near future. But we apologize that we have some neighbors out there that just don't care, they just want to go ahead and shoot their fireworks off regardless of how it affects anybody else, particularly our seniors, but most particularly our veterans. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome very much. Well spoken. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to sit as a panelist for a housing town hall meeting and resource fair sponsored by Congressman Stephen Horstford. Just wanted to thank him and his office for putting that together. We had a great panel of housing experts here to answer questions and talk about issues facing people in our community in terms of housing affordability and availability. There was also a resource fair after the town hall with great resources from the community, including the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. It was a great event, attended here in person as well as on Zoom, I believe. Also, wanted to put out an event coming up, so you can put it on your calendar, even though summer just started, we're already talking about back-to-school events. On the 7th of August, I have the privilege of partnering again with County Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick at Silver Mesa Rec Center. We've had in the past pool party with lots of fun, music, movies, games, and activities. This time, we were doing it a little different, no movie, lots of fun games, music, food to eat. We're going to be giving away 500 backpacks, and I have 12 BMX bike shop quality bikes that I'll be raffling off. We'll have a great time. And also, we're partnering with Southern Nevada Health District. They have a Move Your Way campaign. The Health District will be out there to give out great information on how people can be physically active in a way that suits you and your physical abilities and your interests. So please come and hang out with us for a back-to-school event on August the 7th.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Goines Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I am on a committee called the West Las Vegas Promise Neighborhood Initiative. It's a grant-funded program, and it encompasses nine highly, high-poverty census tracts that include North Las Vegas and the city of Las Vegas, and it's broken down into four pillars. One is healthy children and families, education and youth development, affordable housing, and wealth creation, and civic participation, and social justice. The town hall we hosted last Wednesday was about education issues, and it was just a great event where the community got to come out and listen to some dynamic speakers and two teenagers that attend Mojave High School, which is in North Las Vegas, just to give their feedback on the future of education and what goals that CCSD should be working on. Very impactful event, and just so great to hear from two North Las Vegas high schoolers who are super articulate and very passionate about their education. And then I'd also like to congratulate our CCC, our Community Corrections Center, for celebrating their first year anniversary. It just seems like it went so fast, and just want to continue and thank them for all the work that they've gotten done and celebrate their successes and all the continued successes that we have. And I see Renee back there and Jariah, so just thank you guys both for all the work that you're doing, and we are just so excited to have this program, one of the first for North Las Vegas citizens and others.
Thank you. Great report. You guys are sure busy in your districts. We're going to re, we're going to adjourn this meeting for just a minute. We're going to have to have a redevelopment agency, there's a change of leadership going to be on that board, so I'm going to give Councilman Barone the gathering.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I borrow your script? All right. Thank you so very much. So let's go ahead, and I'm going to go ahead and convene here the redevelopment agency. Let's see here. We're going to, let's go ahead and start the... I guess I have to ask the, I don't have the script, but it's okay. If I remember correctly, I'm supposed to ask the city clerk if the agenda has been posted, right? And it has. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and move on to the first public forum. Now that's how to speak on any posted redevelopment agency agenda items. I do have a couple of cards, but I think that they're going to wait till the second public forum. Do we have any written comments or callers, Madam City Clerk?
No. No, Chair, we don't.
Thank you so very much. I'm going to go ahead and close the forum. Let's go ahead and go on to the redevelopment agency agenda.
Chairman Barone and agency members, staff recommends approval of the redevelopment agency agenda as published.
Okay, very much. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval of the agenda as published.
Thank you so much. And motion passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and go on to the agency meeting agenda.
Chairman Barone and agency members, the redevelopment agency agenda consists of one item, and it's our recommendation to approve.
Thank you so very much. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Fantastic. Motion passes. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
I believe we're moving on to business.
Oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry. I can't, you know, I think I haven't not cleaned my glasses properly.
Here's some tissue.
Thank you so very much, Mr. City Manager. I'm going to make a motion somehow to appoint you besides as a city manager and Mr. Tissue, provider for the redevelopment agency guy.
Perfect. So, one item of business is item number three, appointment of a chairman and vice chairman to the North Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency for a two-year term in June 30th, 2023.
Thank you so very much. You know, of course, it's been my honor and my pleasure to serve as the chair, but of course, as someone who's literally grown up a stone's throw, myself, the mayor, and well, actually Pamela hasn't grown up that far away from here, Councilman Black, he attended school, he's a year behind me over Rancho High School. It's pretty much like a family kind of thing here. But as a good family, I think we should also spread the wealth. And although I very much enjoy and again, consider it a great honor to head the redevelopment agency, I think it'd be a good time to let the steering wheel go to someone else, and in this case, I would like to nominate my very good friend and a peer here on the council, Ms. Pamela Goines Brown, to be the chair for the next two years. And I guess that would be my motion. Hey, you don't have a choice to accept or not. I'm going to go ahead and just make the motion anyhow.
You can go ahead and make, I accept wholeheartedly. Go ahead and make the motion.
If we could include in the motion also a vice chair, so we'll just do it in one vote, it's for both the chairs. So my understanding is the motion is for the chair to be Councilwoman Goines Brown. In the motion, is there a vice chair?
Well, let me ask the councilwoman.
If we, I don't, yes. In other words, so with my, with that, I would like to nominate Councilman Barone, Ward 1, Redevelopment Zone.
I wholeheartedly accept, and I guess that's our joint motion then.
Yep. Thank you.
Great. I guess that'll actually start for next month, so I'll just finish it up right here, right?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay. Well, fantastic. I guess that's our business. Let's go ahead and move to public forum. Let's move on to the second public forum, and I know I have two blue cards, Madam City Clerk. Let's get this, Mr. JT Parr, and right after him, Mr. Chad Kroger, and I just want to remind everybody, the, of course, you can speak on anything you like, but you have three minutes, and just also, for the record, just state your name and your address.
What up? It was actually Chad first, and JT, is that cool?
Okay, sure.
All right, sick. Yeah, what up, council? My name, oh, my name is Chad Kroger. This is my dog, JT, and we're stoked to be here in Vegas. We just came from the Cosmo Pool and had a pretty massive revelation. This past year was nuts, and while it tried to bring many of us down, there were some pretty massive silver linens that came out of it. COVID brought a ton of people together. Ross and Shelby got married, Trevor and Lauren, Ass Clown and Lauren, it's a different Lauren, and we were stoked to be virtual groomsmen at all three weddings. But COVID also brought two other people together, us, and the desire to make it legal crossed our minds, but a major snafu is that the government does not recognize platonic love between two bros. But JT is my soulmate. The depth of our love is equal to any other couple, and we've been through stuff together, you know? We've had our losses and our fights, like the time he finished a puzzle I had been working on without me. Yeah, we got past it and ended up crushing a thousand-piece Charles Wysowski together while getting hammered. It was really sick. And yeah, okay, so the romantic part is not really there despite our most sincere effort. So I'm here, council, to ask you to formally recognize the love between us, and I'm going to be straight up, we want to be legally bonded as bros. And while we may just be two bros, should we not be offered the same protections that your standard-issue couple gets? Also, we got pretty ripped on taxes this year, and our dads had to bail us out. We didn't realize that you actually have to pay them, but we heard from our buddy who's huge in crypto, JSAS, that you actually get some really dank benefits from legal unions. So, and also, we've been roomies for like a decade, and so, but the government still sees us as individuals. So I'm here to say that we are a team, we are a unit, and we are a couple, and we want all the benefits that go to other couples so we don't have to get screwed again by Uncle Sam and have to cancel yet another trip to Bali. So, yeah, let's support love of all kinds. All right. Yeah, thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
What up, council? Whoa, oh, sorry, excuse me. What up, council? And Chad, thank you. Thank you for being you, dude. Like, this dude has been with me through everything, like the time I tore my rotator cuff, or when my girlfriend danced with my nemesis, Eric Puzio, at Coachella, or like the time I thought I had herpes, which I did inevitably get, but not that time. But he always saw the best in all those situations, and that's what I want in a partner, is someone who makes the bad days good and just encourages me to see the possibility in life. And you know, like, a lot of couples don't hook up. Like, relationships, and I can't believe I'm saying this, are about more... Like relationships, and I can't believe I'm saying this, are about more than boning. You know, like, our relationship is kind and patient and shredded. And that's what I want in a partner. And I think a dank friendship like that deserves the same recognition and benefits that any other married couple would get. It's crazy to do 33 cycles around the sun and come to realize this stuff. But we realized it. We figured it out. You know, we found love. We found love. Yellow diamonds in the sky. We were standing side by side. As your shadow crosses mine. What it takes to feel alive. Oh, I just can't turn to, but I can't deny. But I've got to let it go. We found love in a hopeless place. 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 Thank you. We'll be at the Cosmo Pool after this if any of you just want to cruise and kick it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so very much. I just want to remind the public that we are not allowed as a council to take action. But of course, that was your time. And so, thank you very much. And if there are no further singers, I think I will adjourn this meeting and go back to the regular council meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the first public forum. Now is the time set aside for comment on posted agenda items excluding public hearings, which should be heard separately. So if you want to speak on any item, any item listed under the consent agenda business, now is the time. I have a blue card here from Mr. Barnhill III. Please come forward. He has, would like to talk on item 5, 10, 12, and 20. Mr. Barnhill, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Consella Barnhill, North Las Vegas, A9030. Again, I advocate for the recommendation to turn from three minutes to four minutes. On the Tyler Holdings fee for, what agenda item was that? For the purchase of locks for stairwells?
I don't know, but you have item 10 here, which has energy, God software.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I was just kind of mad that you guys have a lower, the government has a lower fee, but I understand it economic, it makes much more sense. You guys are a long-term giver of money. Whereas the patrons are usually a single payer or what have you. But it just kind of had me mad. I just wanted to say that. For agenda item 26, I was looking for the supporting documents. I couldn't really find it. And is it for the, is it in the cinema where I would find the supporting documents?
On 26 you're asking about?
Yes.
We'll have a presentation on that later. You can get that information and speak to the presenters then, okay?
Okay.
There'll be a full presentation on that one.
Okay. Then lastly, for the grant to build the drug court that the CCC is planning to do. I don't like how they said, in the overview, they said the primary goal was to build citizens' trust and to, what you might call it, increase safety. And that seems extremely disingenuous, you know? Castle Rock v. Gonzalez Warren v. District of Columbia has specifically stated that the police have no obligation to protect the citizens. So making this whole facade of it's for public safety and all this stuff, build citizens' trust, is trash. How about you say you just want to help the community? Help these drug addicts who are sitting there stuck on crack, meth, all these things that are running rampant in our street. Why can't you just say that? Why does it have to be under the guise of public safety? And I couldn't, I had trouble accessing the end doc in which was cited for, under the statistics, when they use the recidivism from that to do that. But yeah, I think that's disingenuous. You guys won't get public citizens' trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other blue cards? Anybody else, City Clerk, would like to speak?
No, Mayor, we have no additional cards.
We'll close this public forum and move on to the agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda, Mayor and council, the staff recommends approval of the agenda as published.
Thank you. The chair will take a motion for, to approve the agenda. I'm sure there's any questions?
Move to approve the agenda as amended, I mean as published.
Items approved. Moving on to consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items five through 22. It's our recommendation to approve as published.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments, question on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, sir. We will set the future public hearing dates.
I direct you to set those hearing dates. I missed a line there. That was my responsibility. Yes, thank you for direct. I direct you to set those hearing dates as necessary. I was thinking about Bill and Ted for a minute there when they were here.
So noted, Mayor.
I was just thinking, all right. Moving on to public hearings.
Well, you can always join them later at the Cosmo Ball.
It wasn't so bad, but the bench was moving and Pam was over there just shaking. All right. We're coming out of public hearings.
Yeah, item number 24, ratify the International Association of Firefighters Union 1607 collective bargaining agreement for non-supervisors for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Do we have a public, do we have a presentation on this, Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and council, this agreement represents a lot of work that's gone into it from both HR's perspective as well as from the firefighter union. I want to thank Wilson Engel, who's in our, he's our chief labor negotiator, who's done just a tremendous job in working through this. I also want to thank the the union board under Craig Romi's leadership for their efforts that they've put forward in bringing this contract together. One of the, there were a few things that the city, you know, when we went into the pandemic last year, we went to all of our bargaining groups and got concessions from all of our bargaining groups. And the reason for part of that exercise, as we talked about at the time at council, was that we forced, we believed that the budget cycle this year was going to be a lot worse than what it was. And we needed to start to kind of get acclimated to the fact that there was, we were looking at some pretty severe cuts whenever we first were receiving numbers of what the impact was going to be of the pandemic. Even coming into the beginning of this calendar year, we were still very concerned about the impacts of the pandemic. We were still seeing numbers that were very concerning for us. Thankfully, some of the quick action that was taken as far as freezing positions and freezing overtime and other things that we did in the city really shored up the books as well as Director Hardy and his team and efforts that they've made to really make sure that we were constantly meeting, constantly talking about the finances. And thankfully, through those kinds of efforts, combined also with the efforts of what everyone's been engaged in for the last five years, as well as better-than-expected economic data, we were able to look towards contracts that had increases. And as you all know, this was something, once going, management went and talked with you all in the beginning of the year. And we were looking at certain cuts. And then a few months, well, it was about a month after that, we started saying, you know, I think we can, we can do this by just holding everybody flat. And then as new information was coming in, we started to look at the possibility of making sure that our employees were not going backwards. That they were, that the, everyone knows right now that prices are increasing from gasoline, from just normal commodities to other things, housing and different things like that. And we wanted to make sure that our employees were not experiencing a decline. At the same time, we wanted to make sure that we were preserving the services that we provide residents and making sure that we were able to continue those as well as increase those. And so with these different goals is kind of what we went to the table with. And in kind of a bit of a non-conventional way, I think, is I met with all of our different bargaining groups with their leadership and talked with them about what the city was willing and able to do. And one of the goals was to have a longer-term contract so that we were able to provide some more predictability for our employees who quite frankly have gone above and beyond. We've, with firefighters in particular, the things that they've done that they didn't have to do. From leading vaccination efforts, we think vaccinated over, I can't remember the total number, but it was over 100,000 people. And that's a tremendous amount of work that they didn't have to do. And other fire departments in the valley did not do those kinds of numbers. And so those efforts, as well as at the same time maintaining their everyday services that they're providing our residents to make sure that when residents had a need, when there was an emergency, that they were responsive. We put in a place two years ago, an agreement with Medic West, where we have the fastest response times in the valley. And we continue to provide that service. Our team members in the fire department continue to provide that service under the leadership of Chief Calhoun and Chief Anderson. And so this, we believe that this collective bargaining, that this agreement represents that. This is something that meets council's objectives to management of making sure employees don't go slide backwards or get left behind, as well as recognizing the effort and what our employees have put forward in the last, put forth in the last year during a very difficult time. And so with that, I think that kind of represents the agreement. If there's any other questions?
So I'm going to ask a question. So you've got the supervisors and the non-supervisors. You've got the captains and you've got the rank and file people here. So was that your presentation?
Yes, sir.
For both organizations?
That's for both items, number 24 and 25.
Do I have any questions from council? After I get done with this, I'm going to ask Craig to come up. So if your question is you want to thank Craig or say good things about Craig. Craig, would you be prepared to come up here after the vote? But if you have something concerning the contract, this would be the time to ask the city manager. These Craig things or city manager things? Isaac?
No, more of a Craig thing. Last year, and the depths of the
So is it on the contract or thanking the firefighters?
More of a thanking.
Okay, Craig, get ready to come up.
Maybe you should come up.
Scott has a question on the contract, so.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but the contract also contemplates a cash payment upon ratification. Can you speak to the timing of that? Like when that would be allocated to the employees, you know, pending ratification? And also kind of what that dollar amount is tied to? And is that something that we're possibly contemplating for other bargaining groups as well?
Yes, Councilman, good question. It's our intent, and I've asked Director Hardy to come up. There he is, okay. So just for a couple of things, but is my, it's our intent to have this on after ratification on the next paycheck that the employees will receive. And that is something that is, that's consistent with what's happening in the valley. This is a cash amount that's a little, that's a little bit more, but I think is completely justified considering what our employees have done across the board. In regards to being offered to other, it is, this is consistently what we've offered to all of our other bargaining groups. I know that our police officers are moving through the process right now. They're starting briefing. We've successfully, tentatively agreed at the table to a contract with them. It's our expectation that due to the language of their collective bargaining agreement, they have 21 days to ratify. And it's our intent to bring that back in August, which then means if that's passed by the bargaining group and then ratified by, it passed through council, then they would also, they would receive that, see that on their next paycheck. And that was one of the concerns that we had in trying to juggle the concern of Mayor and council to make sure that our employees were not going backwards is we, with the increase to the, to PERS, all employees are going to see that on their, on the paycheck in July, possibly the next paycheck. They will see that. So any bargaining group that does not have a contract in place will see a pay cut. Because that portion will be, will be paid now through their normal funds. And without any kind of an increase, whether it be a COE or something else to offset that, they'll see that pay cut. And that was something that we were trying to avoid, which is why the, this, the basic financial terms of this agreement were presented to the leadership of all of our bargaining groups two months, almost three months ago. So that we could avoid having any issues with anybody getting any kind of pay cuts.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions concerning the contract at this time? So what we're going to do is we're going to vote on the first contract, which is for the non-supervisors. And then we'll go right to 25, and we've already had the presentation. We'll get that vote. And I'd like to ask Craig, Will, did you have something you wanted to offer or are you just here for questions?
No, he actually needs to offer the financial. Per NRS, we do have to provide the financial presentation of that, and Will's going to provide that at this time.
Thank you, Will.
Mayor and council, just a brief overview of the agreement. It is a three-year agreement that covers fiscal year ending in 2022, 2023, and 2024. It comprises, the material items are a cost of living adjustment that's effective July 1st, as soon as it's ratified, of 2.75%. And outer years COLA is tied to a CPI index. It also includes a lump sum payment of $2,500. And we also made some changes to FLSA cycles to be consistent with other jurisdictions. And some other items that are less material than those three items. But overall, the contract is expected to cost the city, between both supervisor and non-supervisor combined, 1.7 million in the first year. Just under 2 million the second year and 2.7 million the third year for a total of $6.4 million over a three-year period. Any questions on the financials?
You worked very hard. We appreciate the negotiations and thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, the chair will take a motion on item number 24 to ratify the International Association of Firefighters Local 1607 collective bargaining for non-supervisors for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. The chair will take a motion.
Mayor, prior to that motion, could we open the
Oh, public hearing. Does anybody, Craig, I'm getting ready to get you up here, and I forgot it. Anybody from the public who would like to discuss this contract with us? Seeing then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. So the chair will take a motion now?
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with Local 1607.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to 25.
Item number 25, ratify the International Association of Firefighters Local 1607 collective bargaining agreement for supervisors for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to speak on this contract, seeing then we'll close the public hearing. The chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Before we get there, Councilman Churchill, do you have something you want to say?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, Mr. Juden.
Excuse me, is it too late to talk on that, about that vendor?
Yeah.
I was partially paralyzed.
You can wait till the second, the second time we have a public hearing. At the second public hearing, you can speak on that.
I know that city council doesn't get involved with negotiations. And you've done an excellent job yourself and your team, keeping us abreast of just what the offers were and the responses by all of our unions. You know, I have a union background myself, 25 years as Um, you know, I have a union background myself, twenty-five years as a letter carrier president. Uh, and I remember when I was appointed to fill the uh, remaining term of uh, former Mayor Sherri Buck. This is two thousand nine to eleven. Uh, I don't often look back. That was a terrible time for the city. Uh, I think we lost uh, if not a thousand uh, Teamsters. Uh, and uh, we're looking forward now, uh, and as the mayor and the council had requested, we want to make sure that nobody goes backwards as far as salary goes. But uh, from what I understand, and maybe you could uh, educate me a little bit on this, uh, I'm a little concerned about our our Teamsters at this point. You know, I I know Fred, I know Johnny, they're good people. Uh, very many of our Teamster employees are great people. Uh, I'm concerned that they're they're gonna fall behind now for whatever reason it is. And uh, a- as a union person myself, I don't know what's going on. Uh, I'm a little disappointed personally, uh, and uh, I just want those those employees to know that, uh, you know, we're with them. You know, we want their contract approved to go forward. So, but you know, this is not for uh, for me to make a motion to do anything like that, obviously, but my personal feelings to you are, I don't exactly know what's going on. So you could answer that or just say, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, there are some uh, requirements within NRS two eighty-eight that that limit some of of what conversation we could have, which is sometimes difficult because I think that it's, um, I know the mayor's advocated for it many times to have a a more open process within with how these negotiations are done. Um, I I can assure you that um, Wilson and our entire negotiating team is working uh, working tirelessly to make sure that our team members um, are not impacted uh, by any failings anywhere. And so um, there's been some some good conversations. I think, as you know, with your experience, there's um, it's a process. It's a process that goes through, um, I don't want to say it's a, it's a cycle, but it's a process that has to go through different steps. And I believe that we're coming uh, close. I mean, this is the uh, the terms that were discussed uh, by council, I can't remember the exact date, but months ago, um, and as I reported to you at the time and reported back, were were presented to to leadership um, uh, with within the different bargaining groups, including the Teamsters. And um, there's, one of the challenges with having a longer term contract is there's a sense um, from both uh, from both sides is to make sure that you tighten up things because you won't be back to the table for a while. And so that does make it um, a something that 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 requires a little bit more time. Um, I do know that we will be uh, having a negotiating session tomorrow um, with the Teamsters, and we believe that some of the proposals that are being, um, you know, we're s- the city's still waiting for some some response to some of the things that that we've put forward, but we believe that that it's it's moving towards um, a resolution that's not going to injure our team members, which I believe is is your all's concern and a concern that you just expressed. So we are, we're working for that, we're working towards that. Um, and the the Teamsters have brought on um, Dave Nor, who used to be uh, an employee with the city of North Las Vegas to assist with them at the table and working through the process. And so we're, we're uh, hopeful that that leadership team with our team will be able to get something done.
Thank you, Mr. Juden.
At this time, I'd like to invite, at the chairman's discretion, to ratify, pardon me, to ask Craig Romi, the International Association of Firefighters Local Six Oh Seven, to come up to the dais, please. Craig, while you're walking up, it it was plainly aware to us that our chief and assistant chief and our fire guys all got together, the firefighter family got together when it came to this COVID situation. And you guys are probably the most trained in public health in our city. And for what happened and all the work that went in, the putting yourselves in front of other people who might have a sickness, you know, and all those kind of things, it was very heartwarming to see and very almost heroic to see how you guys pulled together for our city. So I just wanted to bring you up here. I know some people in the council want to say something special about the relationship that we built with the firefighters and the the community. We want them to recognize how much we appreciate what you guys do whenever called upon. So Councilman Bron, we'll go down the list.
Uh, thank you very much. And um, uh, Craig, it it's also very good to see you. Um, I don't, uh, maybe it's not a a perfect fire department, but you guys are perfect from North Las Vegas. Um, in my dealings, uh, I've I've ridden there, a a truck, a a a fire engine, and of course, a rescue there from fifty-one. I've literally seen uh, that your members uh, performing life-saving uh, procedures on one of my residents, you know, uh, as a result of a a tragedy. Um, the defining moment, though, uh, came last year at the, of course, in the the very depth of the uh, of the pandemic, when um, it came to my attention now from calling the uh, the um, homes over here, the the rest homes on on Cheyenne, that many of them, not only were they out of PPEs, um, some of them were fashioning them out of, you know, uh, handkerchiefs. There was one that had a a very large, you know, patient population, and they were literally down to the last units in a box. And uh, your, you know, your your brother's team sprang into action and provided literally five thousand sets of PPEs within just a few hours. Um, and that literally saved lives. Uh, there there's just no other way to say it. Uh, just right after that, we saw a a huge uh, a nept- a neptic in many cases and and of course, the the these homes across the valley and something that we were spared. And um, that was, you know, the professionalism of of your peers, uh, of the members uh, uh, that that you represent. And um, again, uh, as a, as a city council here, uh, we always are are trying to balance out uh, the needs of the public, of course, with the needs of of your members. And uh, I wanted to uh, thank you, uh, thank your leadership and actually uh, providing that leadership and coming to a resolution um, to where we we get, you get something for uh, your members, and we also get uh, long-term viability, economic viability for the city. Um, again, uh, for a lot of people, that didn't sound too sexy, but I I've seen uh, again, uh, what you, what your members are are capable of. And um, it's a, it's a, it's an honor to to vote uh, for this contract. And um, I just, um, any, anything else that that we can do, you know, you you have, I know, my own personal, um, my my own personal thanks. And um, we we look forward to continuing to to do uh, to have the services of 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 your members here in the city of North Las Vegas. And I owe you guys a carnesada.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Craig and I are friends. I I thought Joey'd be here tonight, too, but where is he?
He's back in the back.
Oh, how are you? Should've came down with Craig. Now you don't want to. Uh, you know, I was at a town hall meeting in Sun City the other day, as I mentioned earlier, and uh, I was just mentioning some things as far as our firefighters go. And I mentioned the fact of, I reminded all the people, we had over a hundred people there, uh, you know, about our firefighters giving those vaccinations to all of residents up there. And uh, I didn't even finish my sentence, and every person there applauded. So uh, you know, that is how um, our city feels about our firefighters. Uh, I appreciate you, um, you know that, particularly with getting this contract done for your membership, both you and Joe and the other people on your team. And uh, I guess I have a special connection feeling towards our firefighters for, you know, things that'll be coming in the future as far as the memorial and everything. Uh, but I also have that same connection with our police as well, being part of bringing the VIPS program together. So I just want to say thank you to you both and to all of our firefighters for what you do every single day over here. Thank you.
Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So as a councilman, um, I'm incredibly proud of our fire department. I'm very confident in our fire department and their capabilities and their commitment to our residents and doing things the right way. Um, I've been on ride-alongs, I've witnessed them, um, I've interacted with them, and we have a great team of individuals that go out every day, every hour of every week or at the ready to serve our community. But when you move into the the realm of the pandemic, I always um, think back to what Chief Calhoun said many months ago, which is, we, and I get the quote maybe a little off, but we've been preparing our entire career for this, the pandemic. However, I would assume as people, as humans, you're doing things and have done things as firefighters and paramedics that you probably thought you would never do in your career, and yet you did them. Um, so as a councilman, I'm very proud, and and as a resident, I just want to express personal gratitude. In early January, um, mid-morning, the paramedic rescue from Station Fifty-Five was in the front of a a man and woman's house, friends of mine, my neighbors and church members, as um, they were wheeled out and taken to the hospital because they had COVID. Um, I saw the the paramedics in this ambulance, Fifty-Five, um, wheel my friend out, and they were in gowns and masks, and they were doing everything that they could to reassure him emotionally, as well as stabilize him physically because he couldn't breathe as his wife left thirty minutes prior in another uh, rescue vehicle. Unfortunately, uh, his wife never came home from the hospital, but he did, and he's with his um, autistic son, and they're, they're uh, doing okay. But I just have that image burned in my mind of the compassion and the expertise and professionalism of those paramedics on that January morning. So thank you.
Councilwoman?
Well, going last, they've said everything that I would have said, but I just want to um, add my thank you for being the voice and the leadership and the type of person that you are, truly compassionate, truly dedicated, and I I know you love what you do. Um, we've had those conversations before, and you wouldn't be here if you did not. And just that we don't know what you all go through on a daily basis. Um, very high-level stress job, but we appreciate that you are dedicated in what you do to keep our community safe and wouldn't trade you for the world.
Craig, this is a time that you can speak for your organization.
Well, Mayor and Council, thanks you very much for the kind words. Is it on?
Yeah.
Thank you for the kind words. Um, I'll address the the COVID situation first.
You have to move over just a little bit, Craig.
I'll address the COVID situation first. Um, yeah, it was a little different than what we normally do. I think the guys stepped up and did a great job. Um, I think a lot of recognition needs to go to Chief Calhoun and Chief Travis Anderson without their leadership, and they're setting the entire process up. We would have never been able to complete the mission that we had. Um, we did do significant more than anyone else in the valley did, and our, we were way more efficient at it. We were able to use less people, less resources, and produce a way better product. So thanks to the chiefs, the leadership got us where we needed to be. In regards to the contract, uh, it's a really, it's a fair contract. I think both sides come out um, with something or a few things that they wanted. They always say that if you have a, uh, if you're a little bit unhappy with the contract, it's probably a good one. Nobody gets everything they want, right? But I think everybody walked away with relatively satisfied. Uh, I would like to thank the Ryan Juden for all of his work on the contract, Chief Calhoun, his work on the contract. Uh, we also had Wilson. Wilson, this was his first time leading a negotiation like this. He did a great job. Thinking of, this is the third time I've stood before you and talked about a contract. Um, we only had four meetings and were able to get a contract finished. Uh, contrasted that in the past, when we would have fifteen meetings or something like that. So I think it went really well and really efficient. Um, thank Will Hardy for all of his work on it. He had figured out the numbers and figured out where he could go, go with things. Think his number's a little shaky at times, but I'm gonna give him a new calculator next time. I'm sure he'll come up with better numbers. Um, Sally, our new HR director, like, thank her, Mark Jordan, Tina Geiger, all of those folks for our help today in the North Las Vegas Legal Department. And then, uh, last but not least, we uh, like to thank the Board of Sixteen Oh Seven, Joseph, our vice president's back there right now, and then our legal counsel, Jeff Allen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, you show me the organization that wins, Boy Scout troop, church, you know, school, and I'll show you a leader. You've mentioned Joe Calhoun's name twice. We have a fantastic leader in our community and assistant chief, and they deserve the credit you've shown them. Thank you for being such a great, well-oiled team together. We appreciate that. Thank you. Joe, thank you very much for your leadership. Um, we're gonna move on to move on to business now?
Uh, we need to have a
I have already
Public
I've already done that.
Hearing on this one? Not on this item?
No, we've already done that. We're moving on to business.
Item number twenty-six, authorize the city manager is designated to enter into a service agreement for educational support, educational support services. You really should be able to say the word educational when you have multiple degrees. Um, with Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand for the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy. In a form approved by the city attorney's office and authorized by the city manager is designated to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Goldberg, Assistant City Manager, were you gonna start this off? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor and Council. Um, I appreciate you having me back today. I've been giving you updates um, on the work uh, you directed us to with Learn NLV, and I'm happy with the latest update now, which is um, SNUMA Year Two. As we've talked about, there was overwhelming demand from our SNUMA families for it to continue. They were just so thrilled with um, the achievement they saw in their students and the service they were provided by the city and um, all the support that their family received there. And so today, um, in partnership with Opportunity One Eighty, I would like to recognize um, Jana Wilcox-Lavin and her staff. They helped us with this RFI that we put out for operators for SNUMA next year. Um, they did a tremendous job. We got lots of interest, and uh, today we have a recommendation for you that you um, consider, and we recommend approve a contract with SSS and PTAA. Um, we've got some guests here, and I believe um, maybe a Dr. Love on the phone. Um, they're local educators and national educators that would like to bring their proven successful model to North Las Vegas and adopt the SNUMA Way that we created um, with our fabulous partners next year, and I'd love to bring them up and let them tell you about themselves.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Paraday. Welcome to our city council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Uh, thank you, Mayor and uh, council members. It'll be hard to follow Bill and Ted, but at least their passion. But let me uh, uh, I don't know how much time we have, but I'll try to go through this quickly to kind of introduce uh, what we have done, so the whole concept, and then if I'm running out of time, please stop me. So um, I don't know how to move to the next slide, or do I need to signal? Okay. Um, so if we can start with the next slide, uh, basically, I wanted to go over the mission and vision of PTAA School. Um, I think we've got to probably click keyboard a couple of times. Uh, there should be something, there you go. Can you click it two, three more times? Thank you, man. Perfect. Uh, so the, it's a STEM-based school, and all our schools right now are in multiple states, including Texas, Arizona, Nevada, and Colorado. And uh, as STEM is growing all across the nation and the world, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and uh, we have been trying to replicate these uh, uh, academies into different state levels, and that's what brings us to this point here. Uh, one of the biggest uh, mission for us is to ensure that our students are ready for post-secondary and college education because that's a big gap. It's just not elementary and middle, kind of see how they go and progress from there after the middle school and go to the college. Um, the other thing we have seen is a huge uh, uh, lackness of diversity that comes to STEM education. So the female population is very less represented in STEM fields. Uh, there is minorities, population is also less represented as far as Latinos and African-American population. So we have worked on several uh, school districts and several campuses, including the North Las Vegas. We actually work with Hundred Academy here, uh, which is basically using as the last year and a half, providing the same services, and we have ninety-seven percent minority representation there, uh, working on the STEM education field. Um, our, we have several creditations, which are national creditations. One of the bigger one is P-Tech, uh, which is essentially for uh, providing a college pathways to our high school students. And we are trying to make sure that we work definitely with the community because every community has a different need. So that's kind of what we modify based on where the community needs are and what's needed for the workforce in that particular market. Uh, could we go to the next slide, please? Uh, so going over the education philosophy, we definitely are working towards a twenty-first century goal, but that doesn't mean we undermine the twentieth century business, uh, education uh, requirement. So when I say twentieth century, we talk about, you know, mind math, learning. Uh, we used to always remember tables in our head when we do the calculations and tabulations. But uh, so that those, we we definitely work on those critical skills, but twenty-first century skills are more around the project-based learning skills, and that's what we have been incorporating throughout, and that's part of our education. And that's part of our education philosophy, and that kind of lies together with STEM. The other part we talked about is that there is a process of learning through the inquiry-based system. And this is the example I gave in all of our presentations, that we all use a 409 solution at home. And the reason it's called 409 is because it took them 409 times, attempts to make it. So there is a whole process of learning from failure and trying to learn again and do it again and again. So that whole process is very critical to learning, because I have three boys, and they want to do it first time, and they want to do it right. And that's a process which we try to learn our students that it's okay to fail. It's okay to, you know, learn from your mistakes and kind of go over it, and that's part of our philosophy. Could we go to the next, please? We definitely have a very high rating system. So I think this one here is from our Texas schools, where we have over 5,000 students that we serve. And they have a rating system of A through F, which is kind of a five-star to one-star rating system that converts here. So for last three years, we have been consistently A-rated. There was obviously no scores for last year because of pandemic. But prior to that, if you go backwards, since our inception of charter model, we have always been a A-rated school. The next one. Quick touch on this, two next two slides. We, the program is kind of perfect for SNUMA, because it's designed in a way that it's an aptitude over age program, where you can have students at a different aptitude level. It's not based on age. So you could be a third grader working at a fifth grade level, or you could be a fifth grader with gaps coming in. So the program is designed for a rotation schedule, so which matches it, so which works perfectly in a process like this, where you have a smaller setting and students are able to work at their aptitude level. We go to the next slide. We can, we talked about this rotation, so we can go to the next one. And I just wanted to quickly touch base on our scaffolding approach for STEM. So we'll make sure that all of our teachers in SNUMA do go through a professional development piece. This is kind of what showing you is what they go through, elementary to the middle and a high school process. And as you can see, this is what we build in specifically engineering and technology process. And in elementary schools, they go through robotics and automations that kind of build them to middle school, where they have six modules, going from AR to data modeling and things like that. And then that brings them to the high school, and they will be able to have options in Vegas, at North Las Vegas, where they will be able to then go if that's what they are interested in pursuing. Next. We can skip this and go to the next one. I want to show you a video of what a sixth grader learns. We can go to the next slide. So this is the example of a data modeling process that they learn in sixth grade. So the best example is, you know, if you look anything around this room, in order for it to be mass-produced, it has to go through what we call the data modeling process. And then it can be shipped to any plant around the nation where it can be mass-produced. So this is the example of a ballpen. If we can play this, it's something kids learn in sixth and seventh grade. And because they have access to, if you press, there will be a play button that will pop up, and then just need to Yeah, there you go. So they are, the reason I want to give this example is because they don't even have to send it to a manufacturing plant. This is something our students are able to print in the classroom. It's a typical 3D printer where they're able to create different parts, and they're able to print them separately and put them together, and they can actually have a pen which they have built themselves. It's also, we have engravers in the classroom, so they're able to engrave it, so they can market it, they learn the concept of it and stuff like that. So this is a good example to show what a module in sixth grade will look like. Go to the next slide. If you just press enter. We have several industry partners. Three main industry partners are Microsoft, Sharp, and Lockheed Martin. And the reason we have this is direct tie-up with our high schools. These are our PTEC partners who either come and teach a class in our school, or our students are able to take internship with these three industry partners. I think if you press three times, they will pop up one at a time. There you go. And we can go to the next slide. Okay, so last thing with the alliance with SNUMA and PTAA. And if you can press like four, five times. So all the teachers will be able to then get through professional development just because of our local alliances and accessibility to 100 Academy, which we do provide, so we don't have to worry about, you know, that piece of it. The other, all the SNUMA teachers will get STEM certifications. We have two STEM certifications that are going through towards the end of July and August. And all our teachers who are part of SNUMA will be able to take it. And the other pieces, you know, we don't know where the vision of SNUMA is. We are talking, you know, several pieces. But we are able to create that within our network, and if there is a flexibility to the vision that's needed, we will definitely be able to provide it based on how we are working right now. I think that's all I had. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Ms. Goldberg, would you come back up? So do you want to add something to this presentation, or I know we had the other organization here, and can you give us a difference?
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity. I thought Dr. Pandy did a great job. It's one organization that's all working together, but Dr. Pandy did recruit local talent. We wanted to be sure that the Learn NLV initiative that we're creating here benefits not only our children, but our adults too, in terms of job creation and opportunities for leadership and development. And so Dr. Pandy and his team found Dr. Love, who was brought in, this group was brought in to turn around the 100 Academy of Excellence that was having some struggles. And over the past several years, they've achieved great success, and I can turn it over to Dr. Pandy. But my understanding is the, the school leader would be Dr. Love, who is currently in the community as an educator.
So just a quick question for you, Dylan, and you can jump in if you want. So I have children that go to school. They get tested, and they go, you're really good in math, and you're not so good in English. And then you, you find a group that they should be in. Doesn't matter if they're fourth graders or third graders, and you start working to bring them up to the levels they need to be. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's the biggest piece for our success. So every student that comes to the system go through a standardized test to start with, and that helps us decide where the aptitude is. So typically, we do it in math and English, right? And based on where they are scoring, we try to match with their rotation. So it's easy for the teachers, because the teachers don't have to create like three lesson plans for the same class, because the rotation program is on the same aptitude. And it also helps the student, because if they're flying, we always say we let them fly. And if they have some gaps, there's no point in teaching them concept that will make them, you know, not successful. So that is definitely, you're right, the way you explained it. It depends on where the aptitude is. That's what we're trying to match.
I just want to make sure I heard that. I'll just work this way, if that's okay? Councilwoman Brown?
Yeah, I think the flashword that Clark County literally uses is competencies. I'm very impressed. A lot of people, I think, don't realize, you know, what the, what actually origins, you know, of our modern public school system is. We have basically a, a school system that was begun during the age of agriculture, hence the summers off to allow the children to go off on, to do harvest duty, and influenced, of course, and changed a little bit by the age of industry, which is why we have grades. We progress them all at the same time, because it's almost like an assembly line process. Well, you know, after 150 years, we begin to find out that, of course, humans are a little bit more sophisticated than that. And of course, the, the one thing that I've learned as an educator for 27 years, and of course, you know, our very good colleague here, who of course retired as a, as a professional school leader, every kid, of course, advances at their own rate. We tend to push, you know, we keep kids in until they're 18 years old, because, you know, 100 years ago, we didn't want them competing with people out there in the public for their jobs, okay? That's why we keep them until they're 18. But in, in working again at a high school, there are, there are young men and women who are right now ready to go, go ahead and compete for spots in, in a college, who in a couple of years could probably compete for spots in a medical school. And they would combine their energy and, and their, their energy and their talents. And that would really, I think, increase, I think, the progression of our country. And so now, here you come, at this time when, again, we didn't know why we got the pandemic. You know, I always said, hey, you know, there's things that, there are several linings that there are going to be. There's, there were, there were obviously so many lessons to be learned. And this is one lesson that we're learning now. We have an opportunity in a small controlled environment to put this to the test. Can we have children attend school and be addressed according to their competencies? Can they progress according to how they match those competencies? Well, you're going to get that, that opportunity. I, myself, as an ESL language, as a second language, and/or a teacher who's dealt a lot with IEP students, I know I'll be very, very interested to see your progress. And I think for the parents that are watching, if you want to, if you feel that your children have been missing out on something, you're probably right. And if, with my own children, I know I've had a couple of kids, you know, one of my own children who was an IEP student, and sometimes things for him were really difficult. And I just wish that, you know, unfortunately, if there was a competency-based program, you know, more widely available, you know, I wish my, my own kids would have had access to that. Are there any, the question I guess that I have, are you, are you, as, if this takes hold, will you have the capacity and, of course, your own competency to be able to reach out to other community players? Again, I love the IT, but of course, you know, our very own CSN has the only NSA-certified Internet Defense Program on the West Coast. Yes, College of Southern Nevada are the North Las Vegas campus, right? It has this. We have some fantastic resources here. We have air liquid coming in, and they're going to be building, they're going to be making hydrogen fuel cells. We have lots of resources here, if you're able to tie in, especially with the technology.
So that is the whole goal of the program, right? Because like I was saying, every community is different. Their needs are different. The workforce needs are different. So these are essentially tied to the workforce needs. So we have a, right now, a MOU with CSN. We have been working for last year and a half, trying to work with three pathways with them. So we have done the software development with them. We have done network administration with them, and we're working on the pre-med and pre-dental pathways. So again, the idea is that the students who are in the middle school, then kind of, if they go to our high school, they directly have a CSN pathway tied up, which can start in ninth grade. So yes, that is something, so in the backend, your question was capacity, yes, we definitely have been working this process for last two years. We are also working on a high school charter program with SBCSI. So that's why I'm saying this will work pretty good, because if the students are able to then progress from SNUMA to a high school, they will be able to as well.
Councilman Churchill, or anything?
Thank you, Mayor. No, just very briefly, you know, I don't have any children school age at home. But, you know, I could see the difference in this type of education for the future. And SNUMA is an amazing program. Actually, while you're speaking, I'm educating myself over here. So I just want to say thank you for, you know, being involved in this for our children, because that's our future. So, you know, this is an amazing program that's kind of in-house. I didn't take the lead on it, because I'm not qualified, you know, but our educators over here, and City Manager Jude, and of course, Dylan, and the other staff, they did an amazing job with this program. And I look forward to supporting it and going forward with it for our children in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Black?
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly with the, the sentiment of silver lining relative to this opportunity. Pre-pandemic, of course, our council and our staff were highly aware of the educational opportunities in our city, whether it's CCSD or charter schools. We monitored it. We received reports. We held the school district accountable to the best degree that we could. But then we found ourselves plunged into this. What do we do now? Create a, a school in-house? And, you know, that's something that we probably never contemplated would ever happen. And I think it's amazing that it took hold, that it identified a value and a need in our community that we could meet. And really, what we're talking about here is investing a really large amount of public funds in this effort to create an investment in our community as far as the education of our young people and what they can, what that return of investment will look like in the future. And I think it's money well spent. It's a sound investment. I really like the analogy of the 409. You know, you start with a concept, and you work through it till perfection, kind of like WD-40, Water Displacement 40th Formulation. Same thing. I think it's wonderful to take this and continue to try to hone your craft and do so right here in North Las Vegas. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Owens-Brown?
Well, I am excited, super excited. This is just amazing. And we know in Clark County, we have some schools that have STEM or STEAM designations. But this is, I don't think you can compare to what our kids will be learning, my babies, as I call them, will be learning compared to schools that just, just have their STEM designation or their STEAM designation. Just a question, and maybe this is more fidelin' or for you as well, as far as the current staff that we have at SNUMA.
Thank you for asking. We love them, and they're fantastic. So actually, several of our staff from last year are still employed with us or are actually employed with us currently as parent ambassadors.
Yes.
And so they're the ones who are reaching out to our constituents and taking those calls to help them navigate these kinds of situations. And so, yes, if and when we get approval from you guys to proceed, this team has already been working with Dawn and Ashley, my understanding is, to pass information on previous operators. And so those names, I believe, have already been exchanged, and I think some happy teachers will be getting phone calls maybe tomorrow with job offers.
Awesome. And that was my question about our parent ambassador program. So they will be able to do the outreach just to the community at large?
Yeah, and, sorry to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Yes, so we wanted, you know, part of the parent ambassadors, I said, with SNUMA. It's kind of two sides of a coin. We want to educate and create opportunities for our kids, but we want to employ their parents too, and teachers, as several on this panel know. You know, summer's hard if you don't get paid. And so we wanted to float them through the summer. They're the most knowledgeable about education and educational options. And so this is kind of their summer gig. But, you know, with our partners, we would love to continue as a side hustle, keeping them on as parent ambassadors. I don't know if a second job is allowed, but we would certainly welcome them if they were interested in that.
Awesome. And then just one more question, just about alignment with the states, you know, the Nevada content academic standards. How much leeway do you have with that as far as being aligned with those standards? Because if I'm in a multi-age classroom, or I'm a fourth grader and I'm working on a sixth grade level, but I'm still going to be responsible for fourth grade standards if I decide I'm going to go back to Clark County School District, so how does all of that work for you?
So the, we've done the same thing. So basically, we have the, what we call the scope and sequences and pacing calendars aligned to Nevada standards for K-8 program already because of 100 Academy, right? And we have been using that process for last few years. Even though, say, example would be like, when you look at the chart, right, I'm going to go more educational here. But like, if you look at three through fifth grade math, they are like horizontally aligned, right? So if you, you have the same concept that kind of build on it. So if you are in that process of third through fifth, and say you pick one standard out of third grade and you have mastered it, and you can progress further. And at the end of the year, you'll still be able to get a third grade report card. You'll still get the third grade finishing standards. And if we do take an ASBEC test or some test, you will be able to take it during the, for that particular grade. So it's exactly aligned from that process. What, what it does give advantage is it gives advantage for a student who needs to kind of keep going. It allows that standard. But as far as moving to a different school district or different campus, that's kind of how the process work. They can go to any, any other school or a different school district.
And then they'll say, we know where you came from, or where'd you come from, because you aced that standard. Yes.
I just have two questions. And thank you. Any other questions? I think we've done it. When does school start? And when do you start admissions for this school? How does that work? And where are we using for our school? What's your locations again?
Yeah, no, thank you so much for those questions, Mayor. So August 9th, my understanding is the plan is to follow the CCSD calendar just for ease of planning for families. The locations, we're going to continue them in our rec centers, so Silver Mesa. So Silver Mesa and Neighborhood Rec Center. We had been looking at other possibilities, but we are here to serve our families. They liked the location, it made sense. We have built-in activities, gyms, parks, resources for the kids, not just to learn, but be healthy, mentally, physically, the whole package. And so we listened to our parents, they didn't want to move. And so it'll be back at the rec center. The difference will be, it'll obviously be operating rec centers. And so last year, it was only the Snuma program and the CCSD side during the first semester. This will, our senior centers will be open to the seniors, you know, the trailers will be open. You can still take your dance class, go use the workout equipment. So we won't be displacing anybody, we'll just be sharing the space. And that way, it's very efficient and good use of tax dollars and good service for the residents. And to register, we'll have more information, we'll be reaching out to our families that already pre-registered with us in the coming days. And we'll be putting this out publicly if, you know, it's approved. But definitely, any parents who are interested, visit cityofnorthlasvegas.com. Our parent ambassador number is on there, call the parent ambassadors, send us an email, and we'll have registration information soon. But please sign up because I think it's going to fill up quick.
August 9th, what happened in summertime? We used to go to September after Labor Day, you guys.
It just keeps moving.
We're going to call for a motion, I think the presentation's over, to approve the service agreement with Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy. So shall I take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved, good luck.
Thank you.
You don't have much time to get ready for school to start.
Thank you, Council.
Item number 27, approving a local agreement between the City of North Las Vegas and the Southern Nevada Water Authority for water smart landscaping projects and multiple park locations throughout the city, and authorize the City Manager to execute conservation easements as applicable for each project and to accept incentive payments for each project from the Southern Nevada Water Authority.
Thank you very much. And this continues on as our water conservation program in the city. That's the presentation, so did you have anything you wanted to add?
I believe Cass might have had something, but he can, if he's coming up, he can do it under 27. If he has anything like super important, he's got papers in his hands, so it looks official.
Would, Cass, would your presentation be for 27 and 28 then?
Yes, a little bit.
Okay, welcome, Cass Palmer, Director of our Parks and Recreation.
Mayor and Council, thank you. For the record, Cass Palmer, Director of Neighborhood and Leadership Services. I'm here to speak tonight about items number 27 and 28. At your request, we looked into the potential for the removal of non-functional turf throughout our park system within the city. We partnered up with the Southern Nevada Water Authority and developed a program in front of you, two inter-local agreements to justify and to identify areas that we can give haircuts to our parks. But the development of the inter-locals that are flexible to the city, we've tentatively identified areas within various parks to remove the turf. As we get to each park, we will review them internally with the City Manager and team just to make sure that we don't go too far brown, so to speak, and that we do haircuts. We do have a couple of parks, Cheyenne Sports Park, as well as Sea Strand Park and Craig Ranch, which will take a little bit more turf out of the area. But again, these are in non-functional areas. No sports areas will be touched. But the agreements are just that, they're flexible. And we will present to the City Manager in terms of where we think each park will give the proverbial haircut to. Tonight, all that work rolled up into two agreements with you, they have two funding buckets. But the nice thing is that we have history with the SNWA already via turf reductions out at Aliante Golf Course. And those programs have worked well for us out there. Item number 27, the Water Smart Landscape Projects. That's essentially their funding for fields or sports or open spaces. We've identified 12 parks for potential turf reduction, representing about 3 million and, a little over 3 million and change in potential incentive rebates for taking out the turf and replacing it with non-turf items, representing about 1.7 million square feet. To give you a feel, that's a ballpark around 29 football fields worth of turf spread out over the parks. What it really represents is about 95 million in, 95 million gallons of water savings per year for parks. Item number 28 is the Water Efficient Technologies Projects Program. It's really the sports courts, someone would put in a new tennis court, a new pickleball, a new basketball court. That score footage is the calculation, plus the three fields, potential three fields at Craig Ranch for artificial turf versus real grass. So we've identified 10 parks. The rebate on that program is about right at a million dollars. 53,000 square feet in courts and about 360 square feet in fields. But again, that'll be about four to five million gallons of water savings annually. So between the two programs, we're talking about approximately 100 million gallons annually of water savings for the city. So net-net, the two programs will represent approximately 4 million in turf reduction incentive payments to the city, as well as the 100 million dollar gallons of water savings for the city and substantial reduced maintenance costs for the city for our parks department. So roughly, all said, approximately 40 football fields of grass is what we're potentially going to remove. Largest sections are going to be at Craig Ranch, where in the southeast side of the equation. And you're not going to see majority of the haircuts throughout the other parks. But we'll be involved with you and keep you abreast of each of the projects as they come into your wards.
Thank you, so we'll save money on our water bill. And I do know, I'm on the Southern Nevada Water Authority, it takes 60 gallons a year to keep a square foot of grass green year-round, and desert plants are six gallons. So obviously, you've found a way to work on conservation very well. Is there any comments or questions on this?
Yeah, thank you very much. By the way, although it sounds worse, actually, I would characterize the removal of the turf for more of a scalping than a, than a haircut, right? Quick question, I know the idea is to, of course, reduce the amount of water usage. Is there, is there any sort of a reality in which, I'd be very happy to see, just as a concern, you know, Nevada and here, and Southern Nevada, I like the idea of using less water. Is there any plans, since you're going to still have the water lines in where the grass is, is there any way that instead of just clearing field and just having bare earth, and I don't know what it's going to look like, right? But we could actually plant water, water-efficient trees, Australian bottle trees, things that will help, I think, give more ground cover and actually add, you know. As a long-time resident, I'm, Mayor, you still remember the times we used to have snowfalls here? Well, climate change has changed all, has changed all that, of course. And I think, you know, I'm one of these believers that the planting of more trees will help reverse the trend. Is it possible to actually replace? And if we're going to put a zero scape in there, it's more, more plant ground, we could probably, hey, well, we had Bill and Ted, we could also ask, I think, Snoop Dogg, he's supposed to be a pretty good zero scape guy. Maybe we could call him in to help us design a zero scape for, for Craig Ranch that doesn't include certain types of plants that he likes. But would include, of course, a zero scape. But I'm for more trees.
Same, same, I think we all are for more trees, as long as they're water tolerant, trees and treburies. But yes, we will add that element back in, landscape element back into the equation, it won't just be bare dirt. But you know, again, you're not going to see large areas of just bare, barren dirt. We're talking at Sea Strand Park, we're talking about the water edge, where the valley is, the slope, you know, thing. So, you know, area 20 foot wide, but yeah, a couple hundred feet long. But that'll be about the biggest swath you'll see. Most of these are 20 by 40 areas.
Thank you.
Councilman Churchill, did you have anything to add? Okay, Councilman Black?
I think strategic reduction of non-functional turf makes a lot of sense. And I'm really proud that North Las Vegas is being proactive in doing this, being a leader in the region. And also, you may recall that the state legislature just passed a bill that by in 2027, you can't use municipal water for watering non-functional turf, streetscapes and so forth. And so there will come a time where the rebate may not be there and you would be doing this reduction on your own dime. So I think we're really ahead of the curve, we'll still be able to capitalize on that, that $4 million of rebate. I know it's proven in our community that you can have beautiful, appealing landscaping without non-functional turf, with lots of color, lots of variety of trees and plants that don't consume the water. So I'm super proud of our efforts here.
Well said, Councilman. It's nice to be having the state follow the City of North Las Vegas as proper.
You know, and I think brings a good question, if you just made everything concrete, I mean, it would affect the oxygen. You know, we have to have, we have to have fauna around us and trees and stuff like that.
I have one more comment, Mayor. The rebate actually, I'm going through this right now at my own home, I've taken out 1,000 square feet of turf. And they came out and inspected on Monday because you can't just take all your turf out and put down rocks. You have to have a certain percentage of plant cover, trees and a variety of things that, I think it's 60%.
60, yes.
So you can't get the dollars by, on the cheap just by spreading around some, some rocks.
Correct, and they're going to take measurements.
Absolutely, before and after.
Yes.
Thank you, Cass, great presentation. I think that's the end of your presentation, so the chair will call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Item 28, we've already had the presentation from Director Palmer. Is there any other comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Motion to approve this one too.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 29, presentation on the status and accomplishments of the Community Correction Center after reopening on July 1st, 2020.
Ms. Renee, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity tonight to give you an update on our accomplishments over the past year. Before I get into our accomplishments and brag about my staff, I first want to thank all of you here. Each and every one of you played a major role in our success over the past year. I could stand here all night if I had, if I could thank every single person or every single department in the city that helped us out. I came on board approximately April 1st and we opened the facility July 1st in the middle of a pandemic, which again, is probably unheard of. And I couldn't have done that without all of you and the entire city, every department. That includes PD, Chief Ojeda, the City Attorney's Office, IT, maintenance, fire department. Obviously, in the middle of COVID, I needed them. I needed their advice on what was the best way to run the facility to keep the staff and the offenders safe. And I feel we did a really good job with that, especially with the offenders. We had no major outbreaks within the offender population, and that was all based on following FD's advice and the staff and the offenders with the cleanliness of the facility and keeping up with sanitation. Also, City Manager, I appreciate your support and allowing me the freedom and the resources to do what we needed to do to open the facility. Assistant City Managers as well, and especially Dellen Goldberg, she was huge in my success with the facility, being able to count on her and, and get her advice and the resources again needed. I was able to meet with each and every one of you before we opened, and it was made very clear to me what the mission of the Community Correctional Center was. And I appreciate your, all of your support and allowing me to at least get the place open first. Apply, you know, provide the food, provide medical care, provide a roof over their head first and then start diving into the mission. And that's, that's providing the rehabilitation. And each one of you have reached out and provided those resources. Specifically, Councilwoman Black, you were very big on providing the resource for us to hook us up with workforce connections, One Stop Career Center, the Health District and other resources as well. And we appreciate that. Councilwoman Brown, you've reached out to our community service specialist, Jariah, on many occasions for resources, namely Immigration Foundation. We were very pleased to tour their facility to find the resources that they can provide to those offenders as well. And we are using them as a resource. Councilwoman Goins Brown, you've been very instrumental in working with Jariah on numerous resources in the valley. And we appreciate that, namely heart-to-heart. Today, we met with one of the ladies in mental health that you introduced Jariah to and were able to tap into her resources to provide the mental health services for our offenders as well. So we appreciate that. Also, Councilman Churchill, the support that you give for the veterans and the resources that you have provided, I know a lot of that is with our court, but we're able to tap into those resources as well to provide those to our offenders, and we appreciate that. I can't go without thanking my staff, again, coming in three, three months before the facility opened. I obviously was not part of a lot of the hiring and I am truly blessed with the staff that was chosen to, to run the facility. They understand the mission and they support me in that mission and getting it accomplished. And so again, I'm here because of what they do for me and supporting me. So I appreciate each and every one of them as well. So currently, we're offering numerous programs. Last year, we applied for a grant for an assessment tool, it's the Ohio Risk Assessment. Since we're doing it in Nevada, we now named it the Nevada Risk Assessment, so the NRAS. There are other agencies using that as well. We were just trained on that back in June. So we are now implementing that assessment tool to be able to identify the needs of each offender and then provide the resources that the assessment is telling us they need. Along with that, Jariah, our community service specialist, came on board in January and has been very instrumental in networking and finding the resources in the valley. Quite frankly, it's very overwhelming, the number of resources that are here in the valley. And with that, she's also assisting with the CARE Court, which is, which is huge. Obviously, the offenders come to us first before they can transition over to CARE Court. So she is able to meet with those offenders that are identified for CARE Court and then make those recommendations and even start the referral process for the treatment facilities or providers that they need in the community. We also part, with our resources, we have more than 40 and it grows daily. I mean, every day, like I said, I had two meetings today with potential new resources for our offenders. So that just continues to grow. One of the resources, and I thank Council for approving today on the consent agenda, the grant that we will be applying for, for a residential treatment inside our facility. We plan on partnering with West Care to provide substance abuse treatment inside the facility. And then they can transition outside with the same continuity of care with the same resource provider. So we're pretty excited to be offering that inside of a short-term facility. A lot of times, you see those types of treatment programs provided in prisons because it's long-term. But we are going to be able to offer that inside our facility, so we're very excited about that. And thank you for approving. We also are able to offer some vocational and job readiness resources. We, we right now, due to COVID, we're just now starting to open up a little bit, but I'm very cautious with that. We still, we are still following quarantine protocols and very cautious on who's coming into the facility. So we started with virtual. So right now, we are doing Bible studies virtually. And that's been actually a really big hit. So we have a program room in the unit and we have laptops that we hook up to big screen TVs and they are able to do Bible studies, the male and female population. Along with that, we also offer orientation for a lot of the service providers in the community. So Hope for Prisoners, Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow and One Stop Career Centers, all maybe once a month provide an orientation where the offenders can sign up to attend this orientation and virtually, the service provider virtually lets them know what they have to offer for when they're released. And then Jariah spends hours making those referrals and resources so that the offenders have those appointments ready for when they release. One of the other things is transportation continues to be an ongoing problem. So we were able to access some bus passes through a grant. And so we do offer the bus passes to the offenders as well so that they have the transportation to the actual appointment that we were able to get for them. We also started a suspended Medicaid program. Many of our offenders don't get health services. Quite frankly, they don't want to go to an office and apply and don't even know where to go or how to do the application. So we offer that process inside the facility. to go or how to do the application. So we offer that process inside the facility. They apply for Medicaid while they're, while they're in the facility. We send off the application and usually in just a couple of days, it's, it's approved and then it's suspended. So that when they release, they now, it's now activated upon their release date so that they continue with medical services, medications and those things. And we can even get them appointments in partnership with Southern Nevada Health District. We are also offering our tablets. I think many of you had asked me about the tablets. The tablets were something that were put into place, or at least the, the thought of them was put into place before I came onboard. And so the tablets are finally in place. They're operational. There's many services that are offered on them. They can look for jobs. All of our resources are listed on there as well to let the offenders know what resources are in the community. And then they can contact our classification or Ms. Williams to be connected to those resources. We are also, in the future, we're working on it right now with other cognitive behavioral change programs that we can also put on those tablets and offer that to the offenders as well. The tablets also offer a way to also connect with their families. Instead of the old-fashioned writing a letter, some of our offenders release pretty quickly. And therefore, the tablets offer a way, an electronic way for families to communicate. It's still secure. They're, they're still reviewed, just like a letter would be, but it's obviously delivered much quicker than the mail. So that we continue to offer that. There's also video visitation, not on the tablets, but in the unit so that they can have video visitation. There's also numerous activities that they can do on the tablets for entertainment, whether it be games, movies, things like that. So those are a lot of the things that we're doing now. But in the future, with the grant approval today, we will be moving forward with building our substance abuse program. It will not just be substance abuse, though. The idea is that it will be a therapeutic community. So they will be doing not just substance abuse, but projects within the facility to, whether it be sanitation projects, other little projects inside that, that need to be done, and then also behavior change programs as well. So the idea is that they remain busy from morning till evening and have things to do in that therapeutic community to keep them busy and prepare them for when they release. So in closing, I just again want to thank everybody for their support. Again, I couldn't name, I can't name everybody, but every single department in the city has been more than helpful. And I appreciate everybody welcoming me and supporting me and opening the facility and, and, and moving forward. And I just look forward to continuing to bring more programs and uphold the mission that was made very clear to me with the Community Correctional Center.
Thank you. Pardon me, this is just a presentation. Counsel, any comments or questions? Any thoughts, anything? Councilwoman Brown?
Yeah, thank you very much. Ms. Director, you took on a, a big challenge. But quite frankly, it looks like you and your team were up to it. And I'm very pleased so far with what I've seen. What I have not heard is the term transformative justice. And I'm actually, I'm very happy that I haven't heard the word. You know, it's really easy to go ahead and just spit out, you know, a, a term that's, that's invoked. I think we're taking some very positive steps towards transformative justice. I, I think you've, you've mentioned, of course, our Care Court. And with this, my, this council decision to go ahead and open up a court that would serve the needs. I mean, doing business in the old-fashioned way is not working for our residents. And so we're, we're taking a turn and trying to do something different with our court. We're doing something different with our Community Correction Center. And of course, our police also had to be commended for, instead of like rejecting, they're playing their part in this as well, you know, as being your, your front line of assessment whenever they come in contact with, with members of, of our, of our community. I'm very happy to say that we have the, the three parts of this all working together. It's, it's gonna, I, I understand, you know, nothing's perfect. Again, you're making very positive steps and you know, there's still a lot of things to work out. I would just ask if, just one little tiny sliver that, that always concerns me is our outreach to Latino community. Recently, of course, we had our, the Latino Citizens Academy. Did you actually have to, have, have a chance to play any part in, in that?
No, sir.
What I'm going to recommend is that for our next academy and maybe also for the, the regular Citizens Academy, right, that there be a, a section, maybe even like expand a little bit to include, you know, two very big parts of, of protecting our, our, our public, which is of course, your correctional center and the thing that you're doing to, so the public can know a little bit more and be briefed on, on what's going on there. And of course, I, I, I think members of, of the, of the academy should also meet the judge, Judge Lee and his team as well. Again, you know, we're doing a lot of positive things here, but I, I think overall, even our own public doesn't, they're not really all that in, and, and they haven't been exposed to what we're doing here. They, they may or may not be, you know, enthusiastic. We want to make sure that our, our public, our residents here, every time that they have an issue, that they know that when they call upon, you know, our, our, for our defenders here in, in, in the city of North Las Vegas, it's not just, you know, business in the old-fashioned way. We're looking at doing a transformative, something transformative. And it's, it's, again, I'm, I'm very happy. This is a far cry from the nasty boys of the 1980s, right? Which is a terrible, there was also a terrible show, too, with really horrible writing and all that. But anyhow, it's a far cry from that. And the, the difference in, in the correctional center from just a few years ago to now, it's, it's a, it's a totally different, it's not just a name change, it's a totally different facility. And you, you've done a fantastic job. And I hope to see, again, that, that outreach to our, to our community, just so that they know what we're doing. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Black?
So the city took a bold move, which I thought was appropriate and timely to reopen our correction center. And the mission was, is really simple. Regardless of what brings the offender in our doors, if we can harness them, equip them with tools and resources so when they leave, they're in a better position for success and not to come back. I mean, that, that's the goal. And I think it's amazing to see that vision come a reality with the networking and the collaboration that you're doing with all of the resources that are out there. I was just thinking about the health piece and the Medicare. The Health District ironically made a bold move as well, two years ago, by opening up, applying for, to become a federally qualified health center. We have the Community Health Center at the Southern Nevada Health District, which would enable us to recommend or refer an offender, ex-offender with new Medicare benefits, to have a primary care doctor relationship so they can have good quality healthcare. I think it's awesome. One thing you forgot, though, is how lucky we are that we found you, that you were available and willing to make the move from Northern Nevada to here and bring your family here. And so even though you started on April 1st, Renee Baker's no joke.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Goines-Brown?
I don't know when we took the tour the other day, if, if you noticed, but when we walked in the recep, is it called the reception area or the intake area, they were smiling. I mean, your staff was smiling. So like, that's just an testament as, as to what we are doing in our, at our, at our center. So it's just not, it's just not jail, as usual. It's something that we're going to, that's going to benefit those inmates. And, you know, it's just one person at a time. And if we help one a day, if we help five a day, to me, I consider that a success story because they came in with nothing and they're going to leave with so many tools in their toolbox. And we hope that they're successful, that they do not return. With, with the Job Connect Services, are, are they outfitted with anything upon release to have them be successful? You know, anywhere from a dress or suit or anything like that? So resume writing, those type of things so that they are marketable?
So they can get those services once they leave, but we are also working with getting some donations for clothes and things. We actually do have some inside the facility because quite frankly, sometimes it's not even just having the proper attire for an interview, but just the proper attire to leave the facility.
Absolutely.
And so we are working with providers to get even, and honestly, some of my staff have even like, instead of taking their clothes when they clean out their closet to, to a local place, they bring them to us to have in our property room for those things. But the actual resources that we have in the community, they do help them beyond that once they go to their services.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. City Manager, I know this is phase one of what we were trying to do. I know there's some additional stuff that we were thinking about. We're outsourcing our food right now and, and I don't know if we're ever going to build a cafeteria or we're finding this to be as good or better than building our own cafeteria. What are some of the other things you see happening in the next four or five years? Or are we to where you think we're going to stay for a while?
I think it's fair to say that we're probably in, in, in a, in a position, going through COVID, opening, you know, a jail during that period is kind of unique in its, in and of itself. And I think that what I believe's been, been communicated clearly to the team is, is that the desire as, the easiest way that we, we say it is we want to move the dial. We want to impact people's lives that come into this facility because regardless of where you are on the spectrum of criminal justice, or wherever you are on the spectrum of, of, you know, people that, that go to jail, the one reality is, is everybody that goes into that facility comes back into the community. This is, we don't have death row over there. We don't have people that are lifers. So we knew that because of that reality, we had a limited period of time that we could try and impact someone's life. And conversely, by doing that, to, to impact the community. So I, I think that as, I look at the jail over there, I look at the court system, I look at what Seraphin's doing in parking services as just kind of in many ways experiments. And what I mean by that is, is, is it's a laboratory where they can continually look for ways to move the dial. So I think that, that what you've heard today and what you all have seen is truly remarkable. I, I think without Assistant City Manager Goldberg and her efforts on, on putting this together, without Director Baker, there is no way we could have done this without Director Baker. I mean, this is something that I think for her and her colleagues or other people that are, that do similar things that have heard, this has never been done before. It, it was one thing to say, open a jail and be like, oh, that sounds really interesting because no one ever does that. And I'd like to be able to, to do that. That'd be a tremendous challenge. No one knew was open a jail during a pandemic, during, you know, the budget questions that we were all facing. I mean, it was tremendous leadership. It was just unbelievable, unbelievable commitment to mission. And so I don't believe at the end of the day that, that there's anything to say that they're in a holding pattern, they're just going to keep going because the entire laboratory or experiment, if you will, of that facility is to look for ways to move the dial. And as they come up with different things, or hear about different things, or have a, you know, an idea when they're out on a jog that we should try this, that we're open for it. Because once again, whatever we can do to move the dial, change people's lives that are coming back into our community, that's the, that's the purpose of it. And it's not being soft on crime. It's not being soft on criminals. It's not any of that stuff. It's the reality. These are our residents that are temporarily, you know, serving time for whatever they've done, but they're going to be back in the community.
My question might have been a little bit more, are we looking at building the cafeteria there? Are there other things that we were going to do to the infrastructure? Are you going to keep, everything's working away the way we put the contracts in place?
It is.
It's saving us money and it's doing our system. Okay, that's all I want to know that if we needed to adjust. But if you like it, I love it. So, well, Ms. Baker, thank you so much for coming. It's been a great year for you. And we're looking forward to even more stuff between you and the City Manager and staff to produce these efforts and allow these people to have a better opportunity when they get incarcerated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only. Mr. Jordan?
Mayor, Council, item 30, introduced ordinance number 3082, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 17.8 plus or minus acres from an R4 high-density residential district to a PUD planned unit development district, ZN 10, 2021, North Haven master plan consisting of an affordable housing facility, surgical center, an independent living facility, an assisted living facility, two skilled nursing facilities, and a pediatric care facility for property located at the northeast corner of Carey Avenue and West Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 31, introduced ordinance number 3083, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 16.7 plus or minus acres from an RE Ranch Estates District to a PUD planned unit development district, ZN 12, 2021, regal living at Los, Losi Road and Azure, to allow 214 detached multifamily dwelling units for property located at the northwest corner of Losi Road and Azure Avenue, providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 32, introduced ordinance number 3084, an ordinance related to zoning and amending a portion of ordinance number 1226, existing PUD planned unit development district, ZN 13, 2021, mixed-use development at the NWC northwest corner of Craig and Bruce, to allow commercial and light industrial uses on approximately 20.5 acres for property located at the northwest corner of Craig Road and Bruce Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto. And item 33, introduced ordinance number 3085, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 17.93 plus or minus acres from an OL open land district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 14, 2021, tropical speedway, commerce center, Phase 3, TSCC3, for property located at the northeast corner of El Campo Grande and Mount Hood Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to appointments now.
Item 34, appoint, appointment by Councilman Black for a citizen member of the Parks, Arts, Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term ending November 30th, 2022.
Hey, Councilman Black?
Thank you. Mr. Ian Brown is here. I see him in the audience. It's my privilege to recommend him for appointment to this board. Ian, he's a concerned citizen. What does that actually mean? He's a person who's passionate about North Las Vegas. He's lived here for a long time with his family. He spends his own time and energy to research the issues. He knows what's going on in his neighborhood. His neighbors lean on him as a resource for that information because of his commitment to the community. He comes with ideas. He's a critic, but he's also an optimist and has a desire to serve his community. And I think he will be an amazing asset, Mr. Palmer, to your board. So with that, my motion is to appoint Mr. Ian Brown to the, and I'll say it correctly, Parks, Arts, Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board.
Thank you very much. Chair, I mean, Council, we have a motion on the appointment. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thanks, Ian.
Item number 35, appoint one new member to the North Las Vegas Deferred Compensation Plan Committee.
Councilman Churchill?
Yes. Mayor, Council, I'd like to make an appointment of, excuse me, HR Director Sally Mels to the Deferred Compensation Plan Committee.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. City Manager's report?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Is this Mark Jordan's birthday?
It was yesterday.
It was yesterday. Mark, you wanna, we're happy to have you here. Moving on to public forum. Now is the time set aside to speak and, the public speaking issue is not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, we're only allowed to hear these items from you. We may not take action on the raising of public forum. Ask, Ms. City Clerk, we have two cards here. Mr. Daniel Field, are you here, sir? Oh, please come forward, Daniel. I, I know you've been wanting to talk about an issue that drug you down here and you're pretty passionate about it. Good to have you. Wait, wait. I'm not hearing you. Is it microphone?
Tested.
Oh, you're good. Okay.
Okay. I'm a 30-year resident of North Las Vegas. I live at 1611 Camarillo Drive. Lone Mountains on my back door. This last, let me get my crap together here. Okay. I'll just read my prepared statement. My name's Dan. In all the 30 years that I've been a resident in North Las Vegas, Nevada, I've never been under attack as we were on July 4th. The firework bombardment started Friday with scattered explosions. By Sunday, we were all under aerial bombardment with exploding rockets for five and a half hours. with exploding rockets for five and a half hours. It didn't slow down until about 03:30, 1:30 in the morning. Three, I mean, 3:30 in the morning. Not only were we sheltering in place, my pet was terrified, my wife was terrified of the intensity and loudness of the explosions. We didn't see one police vehicle, nor could we contact the police vehicle. This has got to stop. It seems it gets worse every year. And the culprits know that the law in the city seemingly does nothing to interfere with their fun. Meanwhile, those of us who practice sanity and sit in our houses with ear protection and wait for the explosion to go silent. That's about all I have to say. It's just sort, I'm just, as you started out pro temp, Mayor, he says, your ears still ringing, mine still are ringing. And I got hearing loss and then every, those explosions were right over my house. And it was all along Lone Mountain. It was all in my development. It was everywhere, you know? And we had a pretty long discussion about that. And, but we need to do something. Nothing I could do, you know? I've done all I can. And that's my piece. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Diane Hatt, can't spell your name, Joe Merrill, whatever your name is, Churchill, you want to come up real quick? You put on a second public forum. You want to talk about anything?
Gonzalo Barnhill III, North Las Vegas, 890030. I'd like to invite the public to 10 minutes of silence so we could announce the neo Dixiecrats with emphasis on, I don't know, all of them.
10 minutes of silence?
Oh, my bad. 10 seconds.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to say the snooma, perfect. That's absolutely beautiful. I think that's a nice way to go. CCSD, they're, it's because they have the protection of the government, you know? They, the bureaucratic processes have no regulation whatsoever. They're able to block FOIA requests. They're able to hide any allegations. They're able to have their own little political agendas, you know, influenced by the teacher unions, you know? So I think it's nice that we can have some actual participation in the goddamn education. For the care court, I just want to say that let's not copy and paste the North Las Vegas, I mean, not North Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Drill Court. Because that court, I mean, it's, it's, it has a percentile of having success. But there is atypical cases and cases that they obligatory cooperation that it, where it failed, you know? If these people do not want to get help, they're not going to get help. They're just going to do it, do the program and get through it, you know? And especially with the dialectical behavior. When they're imposing dialectical behavior treatment on a group, there's still, there's, there's this lack of specialization in the specific individuals, you know? And I think we should try to do that. Because in the psychotherapy realm, they focus on the maladaptive coping skills and trying to transform the cognitive behavior that comes from those maladaptive coping skills. But there's, it's not that clear, you know? Some behavior does fall under maladaptive. But some behavior is in the gray zone, you know, where it's maladaptive occasionally. And then sometimes it actually works as a function in behavior and actual cognition. Lastly, I want to say, thank you. Bye.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Moving on to Mr. Brian Watkins. Lyran, Brian. And Mike, you'll be next, okay? This one? No, we're still waiting.
Okay.
There you go.
Just wanted to just brush up on, I know you can't do anything about it. But first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor, council members, for listening. My, a good friend, we call each other cousins, Michael Estrada, has been going through some very dire times medically. And I know this, I see it more and more because I'm the one that's taking him all over because he cannot drive because of his back. Just to jump right into it, I got a letter from the city of North Las Vegas. Noel is the chief deputy attorney, can't pronounce his last name. Ed, Edsmore? Noel Edsmore, talking about that he needed different or additional facts or evidence from Mr. Estrada regarding the injury that he suffered from the city of North Las Vegas. So last Wednesday, he and I spoke. So I was surprised he took my call, which was grateful. We spoke and he was telling me that Michael Estrada had said in one of his statements that he had fell five feet. And I explained to him, well, when we're all in a lot of pain, especially back pain, your mind is not really competent at that time. And not to mention, Mike has THC and CBD in his system to help combat the pain. So you're not going to say things right all the time. That's just a fact. So I explained this to him. He kind of went over what I was telling him. So Michael Estrada wrote a letter and sent it to his attention to explain what I just told you. And Noel Edsmore told me to tell Mike if he has any additional facts or evidence to bring it forward. So Mike left a voicemail message on his machine, I think, four or five days ago, but he never called him back. I never called Michael Estrada back. And this is, I just want to just give you a visual of Michael's experience with dealing with this stuff. And again, when he was a firefighter paramedic, in any professional setting, you have to take responsibility for your own actions. Everybody under this roof knows that. We're taught that growing up. Take responsibilities for your own actions. So the incident that we're talking about is when he was taken out of the ambulance on the gurney, it was not done properly. It just wasn't. You look at the striker, gurney evidence, how it was taken out compared to what happened to Mr. Estrada and compared to what happened to how he was taken out recently from the Henderson PD, or pardon Henderson, paramedics when he was taken to St. Rose Hospital for another emergency. That was done properly. But what happened with North Las Vegas paramedics, that gurney the way was taken out, it's logical, it's common sense when you can see it. It was not done properly. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watkins? Mr. Estrada?
I understand you guys keep it so cold in here because these meetings are so boring. I mean, I think the citizens should be allowed to speak first and then you get on with the business. Now, I heard you guys talk about the contract negotiations with the fire department. Okay, it just so happens that a couple of weeks ago, the fire department had a rescue of a little girl, right? All through the year, this fire department doesn't go to structure fires. You can look at their records. They go to more medicals and fire, fire calls, okay? So for them to even get an award, let me tell you about my distinguished career. Because right now, if you go into any fire station in San Francisco, they will tell you that I am a hero, that firefighters want to be me, okay? Now, you see that helmet he has, okay? That helmet has seen more fires than a chief in his department over 27 years of fire experience and being a paramedic, okay? And for me, I am so passionate about medicine that I have common tendations for the great work as a paramedic in the city of San Francisco. We have stations that run more fire calls than this whole fire department in one year. Okay? So I've worked with, with, with old firefighters that drunk Scotch and liquor in a secret compartment at the firehouse. But when that bell rang and it was a fire in a building, they put on that coat like a cape and they went to work. Right? That's where I come from. So for these paramedics to still be on duty right now, they committed perjury by lying on a medical document, okay? And they still have jobs. And this department is given more money, okay, than teachers, okay, for sitting at the fire station doing nothing, right? They make more than teachers. They make overtime when the paramedics are sick. You tell me why they deserve a raise. You tell me why the police officers deserve more money than a teacher. I got, somebody shot a bullet through my bedroom, house. I live in a beautiful house right across the street from Seastream Park. I bought the house for $4.50. I put $50,000 down. I've been there almost five years. I've never had an issue. I called the North Las Vegas Police Department. They do, they take out the bullet. It was a 40 caliber. They tell me a detective, a detective is going to call you. He never called. The Supreme Court has ruled that the job of a police is not to protect and serve, but to enforce policy. Policy, police. Police, policy. The first police department were slave catchers. All I'm saying is, please, make this situation right because I have the video.
Thank you very much.
And I just had back surgery, emergency back surgery. I know my time is up, rookie, okay? I had emergency back surgery.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any other blue cards? Seeing that we're going to pose a public forum? No, no, you come here all the time. You know about the blue cards. This is your last chance. Next time you sit down there and you watch the show and then if you're going to put a blue card down, I'm not going to do it because I want you to participate like these gentlemen just did. Oh, wait, wait, we can't hear you, brother Washington. Now, you need to fill out blue cards so we can show your name on the information of this city council meeting bill before you leave.
Okay. First of all, I forget the young lady who's dealing with the prison system, but you know she's singing my song. Anytime you're talking about dealing with ex-felons and improving conditions in that area. That's one of the foundations of the Ex-Felon PAC that I basically put together there. We're interested in long-term employment, long-term affordable housing, long-term healthcare, long-term childcare and all the rest of the stuff that allows us to maintain a first-class quality of life versus a second-class quality of life. Secondly, my commitment to inclusion, diversity, inclusion and equity is obviously well, well-known. I have some items here to go ahead and share with the council. The items that you see me wearing all the time here. I basically have five of them. I think, you know, I have the right count. Thirdly, I think we have some opportunities, Mayor, that I've been speaking about to Steve Hill and others relative to the celebration lane. Stanley Cup and the NBA are going to be having some championships here. There are going to be championships. These are going to be Phoenix and Milwaukee or Montreal and Islanders. I believe there's an opportunity now for you in North Las Vegas to join with Mayor Goodman and Steve Hill to extend an invitation to the mayors of Milwaukee and the mayors of Phoenix and Montreal, whoever it is that win the championships that we have a celebration waiting for them that's going to go ahead and make their street celebration second to the, I mean, look like second to none in terms of what's going on. And therefore, bringing their tens of thousands of fans and all the dollars that they basically want to go ahead and party with. So in that regard there, I'm going to be speaking with the Boyd Group who owns the Orleans Casino and I'm going to basically be speaking with the circuit that's in Las Vegas. And I believe Craig and Ranch is in North Las Vegas. That's an opportunity to be money to be spent in North Las Vegas, Las Vegas and the county there. So what needs to happen now is the formal invitation to those mayors that, look, whoever wins, guess what? After you do your parade, come to Las Vegas and spend your money with us. So that's the opportunity that I'm speaking with. Lastly, and I'll make it real quick, I live in Councilman Barone's district now. I don't know if there's a boys and girls club in North Las Vegas. Can somebody help me? If there is?
Yes, there is.
Okay? Because I know in that particular area there, there seems to be a need for one as well. I'm on the ground there. I'm seeing the kids. I'm seeing the activity. I'm seeing what's going on. I've been around for 28 years, very educated. My family's educated. That's what's needed. And I want to be talking to Mr. Mayweather and Mr. O'Neil about assisting in that area there. And I certainly would like to go ahead and have some support for that. Thank you.
Stanley, seriously, fill out a blue card because they go into the record, you know? And then, Councilman Barone, you might want to explain to him in his area what we have. We have YMCA, we have things up there, Stanley. Okay? Thank you very much. There's no one on the phone. There's no blue cards. We're going to close the public forum. This meeting is adjourned.